Uh, you won something, did you? The eighty-five dollar.
I did, yeah, yesterday, the eighty-five bounty.
How you been getting on this year?
Oh, I've just been getting smashed.
Yeah, me too.
It's fine. Yeah. Just keep going, eh? What else can you do?
Well, what I'm doing is I'm taking some time off playing and doing, doing this.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I do that, but then always, you know, at the end of the day, you just kind of have to grind the mood, right?
Yeah, but, yeah, I, I, but I'm like burnt out. I like don't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, if you're playing bad, then there's no point trying to force it.
Don't take time off really in general.
Yeah, me too.
Stupid.
So these are just gonna be anything? Just random button hands?
All the button hands that I've played, twenty-seven hundred hands.
Uh, not the ones you played, right? You just, ca- because you, if you wanna do that, you have to put in V-Pip, right?
No, no, it's including like miss, like.
Folds and miss raises and stuff, okay?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I mean, maybe this is the bubble or something, I don't know. Doesn't look like the bubble in terms of blinds, but might be.
No, this is just a.
But it's a twelve big blind open and an eleven big blind cold call.
Looks like a sa- oh, it's a satellite, I think. Cause I, I haven't, yeah, I haven't been playing uh, anything below twenty-two, so it's gotta be a satellite.
Yeah, be fine, right? This is like front of table satellite. That's good.
Yeah.
Or corner under as well.
Yeah, I don't know though, I think it is, um. I think it is, I think I remember, uh, timing out.
Sure.
Oh, this is, uh, so a thing popped up on Star saying, I don't know if you ever get this, but it's like.
Oh, the half price thing? Yeah, I got one of them, yeah, I got one for the five thirty, by the villa.
Yeah, and I just, I had just hit my, um, hundred and twenty-five dollar rate back, so I was like, fuck it.
I mean, it is a very good deal, to be honest, like.
Yeah, yeah.
Very, very good. So this is the five thirty, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we bet one with blinds.
Yeah.
He raises.
All.
Call. Uh, ace in the turn, he bets one turd.
Interesting, right?
Yeah, I kind of wanna call, but.
I mean, I kind of wanna fold now, cause he bets on the ace and like, where is bluff gonna come from?
I think not, I think not having a spade is good though, right? Because we.
But then the question is, how often, how often is he gonna bluff with the king of spades, right? So he has to raise like king four of spades, king five of spades. So like the only combos, right? King doos, king four, king five of spades. Like the only combos that now continue betting on the turn.
Right.
But even those, don't they just have like a pretty nice jack call on the turn with king high? I don't know, I, I, I think kings is kind of shit, to be honest. I can unblock the bluff, so it's probably not gonna fold in a model, but I'd be very, very. I don't know, man, when they just bet on the ace, when you defend so many ace X, it's kind of scary.
Yes, it is. Right now, it has to be spade. It's a jack, jack, some small, right? So his king four of spades, he's a lot of raises, so he's got a lot of raising.
Yep.
And this is a five thirty, he's obviously a good player, he's gonna find.
Probably not gonna have any calls realistically.
Kings obviously pure call.
Ace spades, like I, I just wonder how much betting there is. There's some, to be fair to him, um, B fifty.
But you're right, yeah, the, the spade, can we, is, how do you isolate the spades?
Uh, you go to filters, bottom right, or like in the middle of the page, the right inside, it says filters. Yes, and then you include spades.
But that's taking them out, is it?
Well, the, these are the ones that, that bet. So these are, this is just a spade combos now, right?
Yes, not that much, is it? Oh, it's, it is actually.
Some of the lower ones, yeah. So, but, but the king of spades.
The king, yeah, so my, so my blocker doesn't matter, basically, yeah.
Yeah, but kings is still probably gonna be good, cause then gonna be, they're, they're just no bluff from the king's region, right?
So what did he bet as a turd? Oh wait, I gotta get rid of this.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm not surprised, it's a small bet, we're in position, we're not gonna fold it up, but you can already see, like, kings not loving life.
Yeah.
Doesn't feel great. Can you check against the bigger size?
Uh, yeah.
It's a B fifty-five. Yeah, queens mixing, tens almost pure out, uh, kings, different, really.
That's like too much of my stack though, isn't it?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to see. How bad or how good kings is.
I did folds, but wasn't loving it. I missed any opens yet, profanic.
Yes, not yet. Um, you're never betting the flop?
No, I am. Uh, this, oh, sorry, I should probably with this, right?
I mean.
This is one of the worst, yes, the worst sand you can have.
If he just folds, queen nine of hearts, it's nice.
Yeah. I wonder, do we have to bet one hundred percent? Was it three?
No, I mean, very unlikely, right? It's a hundred percent. Just feels like a nice combo to use. But all of these, like, two overcuts are just gonna mix, right? Prefer, probably prefer to have the onboard suits, but. Yeah.
I didn't realise there's gonna be much big betting here.
It's hard to bet small, right, on six, four, three? Because we don't wanna bet too much, but when we bet, we probably want, like, our value hands need a lot of protection. Our six X, all of our overpairs.
I thought on a board where they kind of dominate the range, uh, advantage. We don't have much big bets, but.
Oh, we mostly have big bets on these type of boards. Almost exclusively, cause it's very hard to bet small.
Okay. That'll be something that I've just learned today. I was betting small, I was betting like what turd?
Yeah, they're just small, for sure. Yep, just fold. Think one more covered.
Yeah, I think I forgot that he had limped.
Nothing, it's fine. Right, I think, I think, I kind of just wanna raise the river.
Yeah.
Like, we don't, we aren't really beat by anything. If he, I mean, if he somehow plays a four like this, then, well done.
If, if I had remembered, I think that he limped, I would have definitely raised the river. I feel like I forgot that he'd limped. You know, in game with, with your tables. It's a good stack depth, too. We must fold blockers, probably.
Uh, what did we have? Is it, um, yeah, definitely against the cutoff, probably not too much against high check.
Uh, forty is fine, yeah.
So this is against the cutoff, we are against the high check in game.
Oh. That's pure fraud. Yeah, so the, the table count has really improved my, um, my RFI, right? My new rule, my new rule of like having less tables.
Oh.
Oh, we gotta call that, right?
Yeah, that's, that is blunder, I think. Well, I, I know, but I, I'm just wondering like how big, because I'd probably not fold too many suited kings. King three, I might fold. Pretty small size as well.
Wow.
Yeah, I'd call king four and king five pure.
Eight big lines, sorry. Fifty big lines.
Yes, king nine is very good.
No. Any excuses?
Nope. No excuses, I mean, e- even if this guy has like a four percent three bet, so probably defend king nine suited.
Big blunder. And this, yeah.
I might, I might also just start betting on the, on the flop. It's not great, but. Just not worth a lot. We can barrel on some, on some cards, right? Like a nine is good for us, a queen, uh, our pairs are life sometimes.
Four way.
Great, right? I mean, but a very, very small bet is just very efficient.
I think with the small blind there, there's like. A lot of. Overcalling the small blinds, it's usually has a lot of jack X and pairs, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's unreasonable, but you can probably get him off pocket sevens by the river, right?
Don't wanna hit a straight though.
Eight.
Yeah, sorry. Found this.
Uh, uh, I don't think I would check much on flop. Jack eight, three.
Uh, I mean, if you are gonna check, this is probably a good one, right?
Sure, I just wouldn't check a lot.
I mean, I don't either.
Also think there are a lot of pens we get value from. Oh, how deep are we?
Twenty-five.
Like forty, was it forty effective? Uh, twenty-five. Uh, yeah, I still wouldn't check much, but looks like it's fine.
No real preference for, oh wait, that's the round hand.
Yeah, you can get off. Whatever.
Miss an open.
Uh, no, it's fine.
I mean, this is.
Uh, I mean, if this is a freeze out, I don't think we really wanna get involved here. Nipiko obviously calling.
Oh, god.
Yeah, we're calling. There's too many tables, right? Like this guy actually, you, you would think this is stupid, that he min, min raised here. But he's actually, he's actually a genius, because he's like, everyone's probably got eighty-five tables, so if I just min raise, no one will see that there's a bounty on the line.
Yeah.
So.
These guys saw.
They did, they did, yeah.
What did I have again? Jack ten. The club. Why does it matter? Yeah, what a one. We three bet at sixty, yeah.
Yeah, kind of feels like I don't wanna three bet full descent. Right? Because your connectors are kind of awkward here. Probably fine, just three with them.
Pure call.
I mean, whatever, queen jacks suited, right? But king jacks suited is three betting, king ten suited is three betting.
I don't think these are, uh, fall into a four bet.
No, I mean, to a non-onland four bet, you just call, right? But it's, it's still awkward. Cause it's, I don't think you're, you're gonna see too many non-onland four bets here. In reality, right?
Yeah.
Especially from like the king nine, king eight type region or whatever.
I mean, you have to call queen ten suited when you three bet.
Yeah, all the, all the sort of bros are just gonna call in position, right?
No, I favor. I think if, if there's a diamond on the flop, I bet.
I don't think it's too relevant.
I mean, I think four way, you need some, you need a bit more equity than just two overs.
I, I mean, the board is eight, four, four. It's not, it's not the scariest board. I don't think we need, we need the vector equity. Like a queen or a jack is just gonna be the best hand, almost always, right?
Yeah.
I'll probably start trying to take this pot at some point.
Yeah. Mistake.
I don't know about mistake, I'm just, like, you can fight for these pots, right?
Look at this. I knew it.
Ace, king off, overcall, eight percent V-Pip.
He's a pro, innit? Uh, would you call here?
I, I, you know what? I think I might be for this one, yeah. Close, but I might, I might, this might just be strong enough.
Actually, it is a fold. Um, look at the stack, I think this is a bubble of a satellite.
Um.
Like a, like a mi- like a Sunday million satellite, I think.
Okay.
With like.
I mean, if you're guaranteed the ticket, then.
Yeah. I think we're guaranteed the tickets. I think I did this on purpose.
Okay.
I think it's the exact bubble of a satellite. And, and like, there's like fifty or sixty left, and like, there's loads of people with one big blind.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that does make sense, yeah, for sure.
Uh, no, that's fine.
Yep. Um, issues. Ah, same satellite table, it's fine.
Yeah, must be.
Although, I mean, maybe at this point, we just wanna jam, but I don't know the stacks, so whatever.
I don't know how far we are, like.
Yeah, exactly. So let's just skip these, cause we're not, we're not gonna know, right?
Can we filter? Is there a way of filtering the mouse?
I don't think there are too many hands, be right.
Why did that get so much bigger?
Uh, let's, players on the table, I don't know.
Yeah. Scared me. Yeah, nice size, bro.
Uh, um, yeah, same thing. It's a satellite, blah blah.
This is a PKO. Oh, we don't cover him anyway. It's a satellite, it's just earlier, yeah.
Same thing, but probably not a fault, right? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, this is way earlier, so probably not.
But maybe you were still locked up, like, maybe you had a ticket locked up already.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe you had enough chips.
It's awkward as well, we don't wanna like.
I mean, you can go all in, I guess. And the big plan just folds everything.
Yeah.
Or should, in theory.
What?
PKO.
Yes, Nazar took it down with the flush, I think. Or, yeah. Uh, should call this, right? It's PKO for sure.
Great, you're dominated by the opposite region.
It's not a PKO either.
What thing you can call?
I think in PKOs, we can call like six-three suited and shit here.
Oh, you can just call so many suited hands here on the button, yeah, yeah. And a PKO, when you cover like this, when you cover all the players behind as well, can pretty much V-Pip any suited hand here, yeah. Um, might three bet sometimes.
Yeah. Good stack depth and good, um.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have too many, in, in theory, you don't have too many non-onland three bets here, right? Because aces, kings, queens, which is called, but. I think it's nice in game.
Oh.
PKO.
PKO, yeah. Is that a call in the PKO?
Yeah, most likely. When you have, you have infinite chips, looks like early blind levels, it's like a call to me, yeah.
Actually, I think he had less than seven, so, yeah, over this. I solved this and then the solver. Oh my god.
Yeah, which is outright.
Uh. He's tight.
So it's not fun, right, against sixteen big blind open, fifty big blind open?
See, I, I have like a bit of a rule that. When like, when non-reg opens off small stacks, I think they're more likely to be noted than.
Yeah, I completely agree that. I, I, I guess the question is, do you think he has open jams here?
Yeah.
If he, cause if he doesn't, right, he's still gonna open ace ten or pocket sevens, or pocket eights that you're doing fine against, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard, it's, it's hard to guess.
Small sample, right, here, who knows?
Yeah.
Uh, looks like a jump in screen name, so it's very likely the nuts. Jack.
Great, so with one, fuck's sake, man. Or.
Um. This is tempting, right? Cause, cause you just know that if you hit your three, you're gonna win thirty-five big blinds.
Yeah, but we're actually, when he makes it this size free, we're actually not getting the, the price to hit a set.
I mean, you kind of do, because you can always, you, well, maybe not always, but I think it's very, very, very likely that you win all the chips. When you do hit a three.
Yeah, but I think. Yeah, but with the, um, the, I, I was taking a future, uh, what, what's it called again? Future odds, what's it called?
Im- implied odds?
Hmm. Taking that into account, I think we're just not getting the price.
Yeah, that's close. Again, I, I'd be very tempted, uh, especially if you have like a splashy big blind as well, who will come along, you can just win a very, very big pot. Like, if it's like pocket threes, it's better than, uh, I don't know, like ace, jack offsuit.
Yeah, I agree with that. Way easier to play, isn't it? You just hit yourself.
Exactly, yeah.
Am I getting the sizing wrong for this board as well?
I think it's B forty, but whatever. In the AI, small is good. Right, you have two, top two.
Yeah.
Small is good, we're very short. Um, I think we wanna bet the turn though, right? Um, for me, it's like. This is probably the only street I will get value from with my hand. So. If I want him to call with like a jack or, or, or other, you know, worse two pair, like ten-eight, ten-nine, then I probably wanna bet small here. And then I can also check back the river. Whereas if you check here, you might face like a six or a seven big blind bet on the river, which is annoying with your hand.
Yeah. However, if he has like, just say that. Hand he has here, which is king eight. And it comes a brick, and he bets six, seven lines and a hero. It's worth a lot more, right?
Um, I mean, king eight is probably no bluffing, right? He has a pair.
Yeah.
I don't think he's calling the turn either, but it means it's, uh, I just think jack nine gets, can get. One street of value, like just bet small on the turn, check back river.
Yeah, you're probably right, um, and I, I think he might call the turn when he picks up more equity.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. Yeah, we could, maybe even just click it, get rid of the big blind. Yeah, that's nice, I like it. Call.
Cover bow, cover one of them.
Yeah, nice end in position.
Come on.
Especially against two ranges that are very Broadway heavy, right?
I had a feeling I might fold.
Yeah, I think it's, it's just placed unanimously in position. Uh, jack three? Yeah, open.
Yeah. Twenty-five, twenty-five though, they both have twenty-five.
Yeah. Might be on the blue side.
A fold.
Yeah. I think there are too many draws out there, right?
That's exactly what I said on.
Nine, nine, seven, jack nine, queen nine, like, there's so many draws out there on the turn.
Yeah, ten-eight-five rainbow, I, I doubt it folds in the solver.
Yeah, I think, I also think in, in reality, I, I think we're twenty-five effective, right? We're not that shallow, cause he jammed the river for like eight big blinds. So I think you're.
Ah.
It's even, even.
Less, yeah.
Yeah, it's like thirteen effective. Um, yeah, it's not gonna be, we're not gonna be able to solve it like this, because your open range is gonna be very different, right? So you, you either have to use the, you can't really use the asymmetrical, unless you use the AI. But the fourteen big play model is not gonna work, right? Because you open jam a lot of hands. Like ace four is just jam.
Oh, I get you, I get you, yeah.
So. It's just whatever. We're, we're not gonna use the solo for this. It's just, like, let's think about the hand, right? I think we can do that.
But we could, we could just do it at forty and have him bet.
Sure.
Check, a bit small. Oh. Sorry, down here.
Yeah, I mean, at, at forty big blinds, you're gonna have a lot of big bets, right? That's why I think we should just disregard the solo, which is, just. Talk about the hand, honestly. I think, I think the solo is not gonna help a lot here. So, again, like this turn lead, I think he's mostly gonna lead, right, on the turn?
Yeah.
Uh, so he's some sort of regular, I don't know them very well, but.
I have one, I have one K hands in him, so, yeah.
Definitely a regular, so gonna find a lot of leads on the turn. And then on the river, so many bluffs, right?
He has to go for it as well.
Seven, four, jack nine, queen nine, uh, I mean, I don't know, like, you can count them, right? Six, seven, seven, nine, there are too many, too many bluffs, I think. Wait, 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 it's so, so, so easy to be overweight bluffs here.
Yeah.
Too many offsuit, offsuit gut shots and stuff, right? Yeah. I mean, nice end, you know, he has a five.
Yeah.
Um, I might get an index here, maybe. Squeeze?
Squeeze, yeah.
I don't think it's gonna squeeze, I think the, the kicker is too bad. But you can still use it, you know?
Yeah. When I'm in the mood, you know?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly.
I'm happy, I'm happy that I'm not like missing loads.
You betting small, yeah.
Hmm? No, I'm happy that I'm not, uh, missing very obvious VPIPs from the button in the last month since I've like lowered my table count and stuff.
Yeah, very important.
It like really shows.
But your win rate, win rate from your button looked, looked good as well, right? So it's obviously
Yeah.
correlation there.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Uh, that's fucking hard to play against. I mean, when he makes it six as well, it's just so bad, isn't it?
Um, yeah, I mean, if you had these stats with like twenty-eight percent VPIP, like twelve percent three bet, this might just be like pocket fours, who knows, right? He makes it six big blinds of seventeen.
Yeah.
Who knows what this guy shows up with? Yeah, he's the nuts.
Of course he does. Tin man says, put me in the game, coach. Ray John, what you saying? Big era in the house as well. Hey, oh, you always bet forty.
There's love, yeah, before the end.
Uh, he's not wrapping seven, so it's either ten X or five, or an ace. Yeah, but he has all the draws. Gotta pay him.
Did you go on all in though with the ace king? How do you worry? Um, yeah, like fifty. Just wonder how many non-lin four bets we wanna have here, right? Because aces are just gonna call. I don't think I wanna forward click aces. So maybe ace king is just supposed to jam in position? It's probably good, right? Especially against a regular, because he might just launch like ace-seven suited now.
Yeah, or ace-five suited.
Yeah, so maybe there's a bit more EV in that, but.
I usually, actually, and I know I say this enough, but I usually would jam here. Uh, I don't know why I decided to. I, I do this four but not all in with ace king suited.
Well, I, I don't think the small blind's gonna call a lot here, so I don't think it's stupid.
I like fifty-five.
Also think people are usually a bit too, uh, polar from the small blind, as opposed to linear where they should be.
Supposed to just jam both of them.
Um, yeah.
There's, yeah, there's zero, uh.
It's just very hard to jam in position, right? Uh, sorry, to non-lin four but in position, because like, the, the small blind is really not incentivized to call.
Even at sixty, man, you're supposed to just jam.
Yeah, I'll probably induce at sixty to, I mean, I don't think I'm jamming it.
You should jam at eighty?
Yeah, even at eighty, you don't really, yeah.
A hundred you can jam.
But, but with a small blind, yeah, I'm not jamming ace king off for four hundred, but with a small blind.
What the fuck? Fuck off, solver, will you? Pure jam at eighty, mixed jam at a hundred.
Don't forget queen jack offsuit, as an offsuit, hundred big blinds in position.
Oh, yeah.
Let's go.
Let's go. Ace king off, easy to play.
Uh, against two and half X, I think fold is fine.
Uh, this is another situation where I just have nothing and I should just try and bluff, right?
Yeah, I think so too. Uh, people have a hard time defending on these boards. Yeah, I think we're gonna have, I think we need to bluff at some point. I mean, it's probably fine on the river, but I'm also tempted to start betting on the turn.
Yeah, me too, I don't know. I agree, yeah. Let's move on swiftly.
They won't wanna get involved here?
I kinda, I mean, I just have it ingrained in my head that, that cold calling three bets is awful.
It is, but I, I guess the real question is, how often do we think? So I think it's really to do with the, the people that are left to act. So if the small blind, the big blind, or the initial razor is like a good regular, they're gonna back jam a lot.
Yeah.
And then we can't realize their equity. But if you have just weak players behind, like what's stopping you from seeing a flop with pocket threes here in position? Cause if the, if the initial razor just calls, because he, you know, he's like king-nine suited, and that's very nice for us.
Very nice, yeah, and if we hit the, hit the three on the flop? What would you do on this flop versus seven then?
I'd just fold, yeah, yeah, which is out. I think we literally, like, with these type of hands, unless we hit our set, which is out.
Good price to hit a set in the turn. Versus.
Yeah, kind of, yeah, I mean, it is, yeah.
Especially with this guy getting in. Just rip the river then here, witness?
Yeah.
Uh, supposed to be big bet on ace Broadway, right?
Um, sure, but I, I think it's hard. Man has the button when you raise and you like bet small, it's just always gonna be good.
Yeah.
It's all hard for that small to be bad.
Hmm.
Um, yeah, like it. Yeah, open for sure.
Don't know what's going on here. One-handed. Don't know why I folded this, I mean, three X.
Three X, yeah, not fun.
Nice, easy. The other thing about taking a week off and doing some studies, not only, not only do you find some leaks, but you also realize that you're not that bad at poker. Uh, Joe, when you're, when you're doing most things, pretty right.
It does feel like you, you're just the worst, right? When you continue, like constantly lose and you just get owned in every pot you play.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. I agree. Nice.
This is dodgy, yeah, I remember, I remember playing this.
I think if I'm gonna VPIP this, probably do it as a three bet, just because it gives us such a good price. You just go to eight big blinds, he probably overfolds after three X-ing, so.
He did, yeah.
Small blind, thought the same, right?
Yeah.
Very good price, please.
Supposedly filtered out my all-ins, although that, maybe.
I guess he went, he went to like twenty-two, I don't, twenty-three, isn't he?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I'd call against min raise.
I did check this, no, I didn't. So I was doing small blind yesterday. Is this a pure call?
Against min raise, I, I'd be surprised if it folds against min raise, yeah. It's against two-one-three even, yeah.
Hit off. That's fine. That's fine.
I mean, it's already kind of dicey on the flop, right?
Yeah, it's dicey, yeah. This guy's C-bet is high, though.
Yeah, 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 I mean, he shouldn't really bet too much on ace king eight. Maybe we can raise.
That is gangster.
Yeah, because he, he's just gonna be in a really, really bad spot with like king-ten, they just oversee bets or pocket queens or whatever. If, you know, if he just bets way too much on this board. We have some nice turn cards that we can barrel on.
Uh, yeah.
Maybe, maybe we should just fold though.
Do you wanna check?
There's just not gonna be a lot of small bets, right? For the, or like, just not a lot of bets for the opposition.
Yeah. I mean, we can still check, uh.
Sure, yeah.
Sixty.
Like sixty, kind of big, uh, kind of. Yeah, big better check.
What's he bet, twenty or thirty-three?
Thirty.
Five percent. Does it go across all the combos? I think so.
Yeah.
Do-do-do. Do-do-do-do.
I don't know what feels, right? Kind of whatever, call, fold, raise.
Do you not hear the song? Do-do-do. I don't like overcalling. Ooh, squeeze. Fold call.
God. Yeah, I think this is fine. I, I don't, I don't expect any folds when you bet. Right, like maybe one player folds because he has pocket sixes, but the other guy definitely calls. Too many hands out there. Uh, I think we're just gonna lose to ace-five or something stupid.
King queen.
Yeah.
That's about it, though. I was, I was, I remember what I was saying on stream, I'm like probably has king queen here, but hopefully he has king-ten. I mean, it's more likely he has king-ten, right? Because we've got a queen in our hands.
Uh, yeah, sure. It is.
That's a big pot, like, I mean.
But he, he still has some ace-X, I think, and some better queen X. I think we should just check the turn. I don't, I don't mind the squeeze and, and the line plus flop. I just think we should just check the turn, try to see a showdown.
Bet smaller, maybe.
Yeah, or that, I think that's nice as well, yeah.
Because this guy is gonna, I mean, with pocket sixes or whatever on the river, when it checks around twice, I mean, I would go first.
Yeah, he might just bluff, but he's also not wrapping.
Oh, yeah, I'm never gonna have sixes here either, though, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh. What, what do we have in this spot?
Uh, aces, maybe?
Yeah, aces.
I, I don't think there are too many hands. I mean, yeah, it's probably low pocket pairs, right? Aces and then some like suited broadways. I don't think he just wants to fold queen jack suited.
But we shouldn't call low pocket pairs in his spot, right?
I don't think so, no.
I jack low jack at thirty, is it?
Thirty big blinds is, yeah. I think your hand is just a fold, right? But I think that's, I think it's really nice in, in practice.
Yeah, it was versus, um, two recreations as well.
Yeah, I like it.
Uh, and then back to low jack.
Yeah, he just gets destroyed.
Yeah.
It's because the hijack probably also still has aces sometimes, right? They flat at thirty.
Yeah, they're supposed to just jam and have some, even aces.
Ace jack suited is a nice end, right? Like ace jack suited is probably like the one hand that people always have. Ace-ten suited probably as well, I think, I don't think anyone's folding ace-ten suited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Except for you guys, you're gonna fold ace-ten suited after seeing this.
Unless Connor's three betting again with a queen jack off.
Yeah, yeah. And just show. Queen six off. Is that an open? I don't know.
Nah, especially not when the, when there's a ten big blind stack, right?
It's queen eight off. Get in there, what's wrong with you? Five-four suited, man.
Nice end, yeah. I'll play it.
That's the stacked up there, right? I think there's a bit bigger, depending on stack.
Um, I, I don't think so, because I think once you are up, up against this player, right? Who, so this player has a super, super capped range. So I think we just mostly wanna go, go small.
Out of position, we go bigger, that part?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think that's reasonable, yeah. Too big against CP, it's fold, yeah. Um. Okay, so this is kind of interesting on the turn, right? Because if we think about our, our flop defending range, we're gonna float with pocket pairs, queen X and ace X, right, with the back doors. So the ace is weirdly good for us, and if I think about our bluffs, usually we would want to start bluffing with deuces, threes, fours, right, like the lowest pocket pairs?
Yeah.
But they are all a bit different on this board, right? The threes is obviously a set, and deuces and fours have a gut shot. So it feels like we kind of wanna bluff with sixes and sevens. Maybe that's just ridiculous to start bluffing with the sixes and sevens, but I think it's good.
Your theory sounds good, for sure. Um, let's check. It is, uh, thirty-five. Single raise, but. Rainbow, yeah?
So?
It's a three, wasn't it?
It was a three, yeah.
It was a three and a four, I think. No, three and a five.
An ace.
No, the ace is turned.
Ace in the turn, yeah.
Bet super small. Which isn't really a thing.
Just go, take the thirty-three. I think it's gonna be better anyways, because it's a multi-way spot, it's, it's all perfect.
Oh, yeah, because the pot would be bigger in.
The pot is gonna be a bit better, yeah. So yeah, we defend with queen X and ace X and pocket pairs. But maybe we just wanna bluff with uh, ace of hearts, it would be, yeah. Maybe we just wanna bluff with king jack, whatever, on the turn, I don't know.
Let's find out. So sixes.
Sixes, yeah.
And it does like, it does, it, yeah, so that's what I was thinking, actually. You said you were kind of disregarded, regarded the deuces and fours as a bluff.
Yeah, I thought, I thought the added gut shot makes them too valuable almost in position to start betting, but it looks like that's not the case.
Yeah, so therefore, like, if you knew that, you would have taken sevens as a check.
Yeah, exactly, I would, I would not bluff, uh, maybe I would still bluff deuces, but I would probably not bluff fours and bluff sixes and sevens instead.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're clear in game, yeah.
What are the bluffs? Just the nine, ten spades, no.
Yeah, some king jacks. Um. And gut shots, right, yeah.
Let me just beat sixes. See, that's the, that's the thing about sevens there, is that we beat sixes, we beat fours.
You beat sixes, um, do, I mean.
Oh, by the river, we don't really beat shit. I mean, we could try fold out eights and nines, tens and jacks, right? By the river.
Yeah. That's probably the most likely hand he's gonna show up with.
Yeah, I wonder, actually.
Like a weak queen.
When it comes for after check-check.
He's bluffing sixes to him. It's just not worth much. Cause your lowest pocket pair is sixes, so he's chopping at best.
Yeah, I mean, he should definitely bluff sixes, that's, uh. Well, it's not even a full weight blow.
Yeah, because you have sixes, right? And you're gonna check six spec.
Right.
So does he mean that? Winning half the pot?
You think so? You think sixes should have bluffed, Ray John?
Yeah, I think so too. You have a three betting here, pretty? I just calling.
Uh, mostly just calling, should I? Play three bet?
No, although I'm asking you, like, so I don't think.
No, I don't. I don't really, uh, three bet pairs. If I jack low jack. I mean. Do you?
Um, I think it's nice to win a big pot with a set.
Yeah. It's ni- it's nice for board coverage, right? And, and as you can see, the four, five suit comes in as a three bet sometimes. Maybe, maybe. Deeper, though. I mean, fifty is probably too shallow. No.
Not a thing. Cool.
Oh, here we go, a hundred.
Check, yeah.
But where, where do you find yourself three betting fives? What stack depths?
Yeah, I mean, probably like sixty, sixty plus.
Yeah, I might give it a go and see, see how I get on.
Yeah, I'm not too sure either, just an idea. Good turn. I, I guess we just had small, we, we have all the sets, right?
Yeah.
So I think we just bet small. Try to get a call from kings.
On the double flush draw?
Yeah.
Do you have any?
I think just very, very small. It's, it's, we, we can't, we can't solve this, like, three-way.
I just went for the rip, hoping, hoping they think of a flush draw in game.
What, what the fuck does this small blind call here?
Uh, he just has, he just has a five. Uh, so that's.
Five, man.
Yeah, he's, he's fifty-three percent V PIP. But. I think in hindsight. If he folded, I, I don't know, I think this guy might have, um, heroed with no repair. And like, if he's got ace spades, ace diamonds.
Um. I don't think so.
Yeah, I guess not after.
Very attached to their hands, I agree, like, people don't like folding aces. At the same time, like, what are you, what are your bluffs?
I just don't like betting really small on double flush draw boards.
Um.
And then we bet bigger, we're two commissions to the forty blinds. So it's just an awkward stat depth.
It is, I agree, I agree. I don't know what the best answer is, yeah. I think it would have gone small.
Yeah.
Well, if it's small, still probably like fifteen big blinds.
If you're a three-way solver.
Don't know if that's, that's a good spot.
Fair enough. This is a PKO, I should definitely. Oh.
I still think we can, I mean, eight sixes for sure, eight five, fine, fold.
Okay, we're done. Third of the way. Do you think we get two tomorrow? Probably not.
Very unlikely. Now, I also wanna stop my session a bit, so.
Oh, in ten minutes?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, cool.
Do another ten minutes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, um, easy hand to play.
I think we always raise, yeah, nice. Get the money in, if they don't put it in for us, right?
Unfortunately.
Uh, yeah, fold. Yeah, it's the bluffing, it's nice.
Man, I'm really not that bad at poker.
Nope.
Maybe I won't.
But maybe you're very, very bad at winning flips lately. That usually is, um, an issue.
Yeah, on Paddy Power, the great site, the great, softest site in the world. That I'm sponsored by, I don't win any all-ins. Profanik, don't you think the games are harder for grind in this time of day compared to night? No, oh, sorry, Profanik, questions to you.
Um, um. There are more regulars, but the regulars aren't that good. And yeah, I, I agree, it's, uh, the games are probably better in the evening, but it's less variance. Which I appreciate at the moment, but yeah, I, I, I tend to agree.
Uh, bet call, what do you think?
Uh, yep, that's good. I don't really know what's going on here.
Uh, did I three bet? Yeah, I three bet and he just.
Um.
Kick the flop.
Because he's a king.
Yeah.
And I hope he's got a good king.
Yeah, it's not.
King jack?
It's not a bad play with his, with that king jack, is it?
Yeah, remember, remember he has like king X of clubs.
I mean, the guy's not a reg, he definitely just says pack of fives, but.
Yeah, it's fair.
I know, I thought it was like full of shit and then he shoved the turn, I was like, oh, maybe it wasn't full of shit.
To win.
Having a club and a diamond. Deuces for days.
Yeah, again, I guess we're in position. Uh, I don't think we can fold the flop, so we're just calling, right? Yeah, we can't fold. We have a pair, we're in position, we have a club.
Does the solver allow, by the way, does G T O Wizard allow? Um, this, ch-ch, raise, call. Squeeze, call, fold, let, let us play the flop then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They don't have all of the spots, but, yeah, a lot of them.
Seven three clubs. King, right? Bet quite big, though, it's hard, it's quite big, isn't it?
Yeah, well, we're in position. We have a pair and a. Not a lot of betting, fold as well, but I think people massively overbet here, like over, oversee bet, that's the big blind.
God.
That's fine. You put in a very small bet as well.
Yeah.
That's whatever, it's no, none of the range does it anyways.
Then the smaller bet.
I, I wouldn't, just exit out.
Don't wanna put in this.
Gonna mess up the, the ranges.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay. You're the end boss. Yep, you're called. You're called without a club.
Yeah. Hard to fold a pair in position.
Uh. Wow. This, I don't know. So what, uh? We call and it comes like, blank, we'll say. I was gonna say deuce.
Like a nine of diamonds, pretty blanky, no? Um, I mean, against a small bet, you probably have to defend a lot, still. Against B sixty-seven, I think deuces is gonna be honestly kinda close. Like, I don't think it's like a snap fold with deuces against B sixty-seven even, even though he bets thirty big blinds.
Snap fold.
It is a snap fold, yeah. Bet is a bit too big, but I think against another small bet. I think we have to defend a lot.
Thirty-three again. Yeah, you're right, wow. Then what?
I mean, if it's like a seven of spades or like a six, you know, anything. Kind of breaks the board.
Heard the seven.
We have to call sometimes, you know, he, he has a lot of overcards. On the river. Not on the seven, at least.
Call versus not all-in.
Three small bets, yeah.
But like. Does he have any seven Xs?
Yeah, actually he does. He's like nine, seven, king, seven, ace, seven, does have some, not a lot.
Let's put a three, so, does he have three Xs?
Nope.
It's three. Ooh, let's get into this, bitch. Crazy. Yeah, so.
Yeah, don't fold the flop.
Right, what about against, what kind of stash?
Well, I think, I think the, usually the big plan is gonna be much more linear, which is a big of a problem with pocket deuces. However, I do think they're gonna give up a lot, right? They're not gonna triple it off with queen jack of hearts here. Um, they're probably not gonna barrel it off with ace queen or ace ten or ace six. So you probably get to over-realize your equity with deuces in position, like he's probably gonna bet a lot on the flop and then check turns, turns a bunch.
Right, so we should probably overfold the turn then.
Yes, I think that's, I think that's fair, yeah. I, I would not fold deuces against almost anyone on the flop. But I think, yeah, we can definitely start overfolding turns.
Can't fold here, can I? I mean, that's not a fucking card you just start leading out of the big ones.
Not. So kind of.
When, yeah, so when people, yeah, when people do that, I'm like, right, so it's gonna be more value-heavy, like if he's, when people.
Like, I don't know what this is, to be honest. He just snapped it off, like, we, we don't know about the timing, but he just bets half pot randomly on the ten of diamonds.
Yeah.
It doesn't feel strong. Maybe it is, like, maybe it's always like a four.
So to me, when, um, when people, uh, check all flop lead turn, right? It's either a reg who knows how to do it properly, which means they're gonna have bluffs. Or it's a recreation who's seen regs or seen pros doing it, and they just do it randomly with equity or, you know.
Yeah, he just doesn't want to.
Good hands.
See the river? I think that's, yeah, I think that's unreasonable.
He's not gonna just, he might, I mean, he might do it with three five, I guess.
Random diamond draws, like, queen eight of diamonds.
Yeah, we beat that stuff, but I think, hmm, he's got two Xs. Here sometimes for sure. And then it's, it's gonna be to do with his hand that he, that he did it.
Yeah, so, but yeah, we, we agree we're never folding ace jack, right? When we have two overs to the ten.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah.
Cause then, you know, we can always beat a ten, I think that's important.
And, uh, having a di- if I have a diamond, never fold in either, because he could just, you know, check a diamond and we can just overbet jam. Whatever it is.
Uh.
I mean.
I mean, you could open, but twelve big plans, small plan is annoying. So, find a skip.
Overbet surely.
Um, pot, right, is enough? I think slightly bigger, probably like twenty-three.
Yeah, this is.
When he calls, you're gonna have to overbet, shove the river, which is a bit awkward. People just don't like calling over bets.
This is an autopilot hacky fucking thing, I'd say. I, I definitely. I mean, geometrically, we wanna bet bigger, right? Sixty-six, he's gonna have eighty, so it's awkward, we wanna. We bet twenty-six.
Yeah, I think pot is pretty, yeah, right?
I mean, this looks like a sad life. Bunch of shorties, I don't know. Two on my hand.
Oh, good.
That one.
Family pot.
This disgust one, perhaps.
Um. I mean, I'm already thinking about the flop, right? It's, it's. Think we can value bet, ace king.
Yeah. Uh-oh, how'd you go back really quickly? I was finding a truck and.
Yeah, just reset it, but it's big plan with this button anyways, right?
A solution to that, yeah. Um. Forty. Raise, call. Use seven. Four, seven, nine, knew I got it wrong. That's checking, yeah, especially with a diamond.
Um, yeah, the ace of diamonds likes to check, doesn't really like facing a check race too much. King of diamonds is fine. First check, yeah.
Wanna know.
Um, so now what's going on here on the turn?
So he leads, I raise.
I, I think we just wanna call though, right? Cause he, we just keep in his five Xs, his eight Xs, his weaker diamonds.
I think this makes it, I, I, I've only, I'm only experimenting, uh, with raising in position, could, uh, I mean. I don't do, it's part of my database that I found that I don't do enough raising in position.
Sure. I think, I, I think the only hand you're kind of repping here for value is pocket sixes, by the way, right?
Or flush, I mean, we could check, we could check back flush draws.
Like, how often do we wanna just raise a flush in position, though? When he's just gonna bet the river a lot again?
Yeah.
It's like B fifty-five or something, yeah.
It's the round combo. I mean, it's there, it's in there with the king of diamonds.
It is, I, I just, I'm just trying to think what it accomplishes, because, I mean, maybe, maybe a seven starts folding against a raise. You know, if that's the case, it's probably good. Like, if a seven folds, but the eight of diamonds calls. Could be nice.
No sevens fold, it looks like.
Yeah.
That's, um, do you know if there's any good way to import G G tournaments into P T four without having to manually input winnings? Um.
Well, for hands, you just import them, right?
Just for the hands, yeah, you just go to the poker craft.
And, and for, for like tournament winnings, you just import to shop, I guess. Probably the only, only way. Otherwise, yeah, but you, you, you kind of have to do it manually. Either way, it's annoying.
Yeah. Hello, it's all over. Yeah, it's, it's pretty much over, um. Profanik's in Austria, yeah. We're gonna, I'm gonna put this on YouTube, though, so don't worry. Be up, uh, in the next couple of days. Uh, yeah, he just folds, I know. Thanks for coming on.
Thanks all for having me. Say it was fun.
Is there anything you wanna say?
Uh, no, not really. Uh, you, you ready today?
No, no, I'm, I'm sticking to taking time off. I'm just gonna. Go home, Oscar has a half day, finish at twelve. You know, chill.
You're gonna, you're gonna start playing again, uh, this week, or are you just taking the week off?
Taking it off, yeah. I play, uh, gotta play that fucking ten million guaranteed, so I play Sunday, probably.
Uh, G G muscles, yeah. I mean, I think there's probably gonna be a point, if you study every day, this, this, this point where you're just too hyped, you just wanna play again. I think that's usually the, the days you play the best, too.
Yeah.
When you're really, really pumped to play.
Yeah, but I, that hasn't happened yet, I'm not pumped. Cause I, I, I had to play the, the Paddy Power home game last night. Yeah, but I, that hasn't happened yet, I'm not pumped. Because I, I, I had to play the, the Paddy Power home game last night.
You didn't enjoy it?
No, I didn't.
I mean, you're playing good, man. Like, honestly, it's, uh, you're playing very well.
Yeah.
I can say that much.
Thanks.
Hard, hard to, hard to accept that when it's not going your way, but you did fine, man.
Yeah, I mean, I've been, I've been through it many times, uh, I know what to do. I went to, like, I've been to the gym, I wanna go to the gym today as well.
Very nice.
Uh, and play football tomorrow, which I haven't played in months as well. Just do kinda relaxing things.
Yeah, just realize that there is a, a world outside of poker, right?
Yeah, yeah. Or, like, usually when I take a break, it's just drink, just to drink.
That's probably not a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, and then.
I think, I think gym and football and studying is probably a better use of your time.
Yes. That is correct. All right, well, good luck, uh, today.
Thanks, mate.